I now call this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Arcan.
Here.
Lloyd.
Here.
Daniels, here. Ellison.
Here.
Scar.
Here.
Strife Oji.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
All right. We'd like to go to the vice chair, Thompson, and do the land acknowledgement, please.
As a descendant of the Dakota Sioux-Sissitin-Anishinaabe and Ojibwe peoples, I begin by acknowledging that we gather tonight on the lands of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples, part of the Minnesota Matochee, the land where the waters reflect the sky. These lands and waters were never freely given. They were taken through treaties signed under pressure, often broken, and used to justify the dispossession of the sovereign nations that remain here today. Our Dakota and Ojibwe nations were and still are sovereign governments with their own laws, languages, and systems of governance that long predate the United States. Sovereignty means the inherent right to self-govern, to care for one's people and land, and to determine what education, health, and justice look like within their individual and collective sovereign nation rights. It is not a right granted by any other government. It is a right recognized, not bestowed. For our communities, acknowledgement must come from continued learning and shared responsibility. It means ensuring that our work from our policies to our classrooms reflects respect for tribal sovereignty and the government-to-government relationships that continue to shape this land. By striving to learn and act with intention, we honor tribal nations not only as cultural communities but as partners in governance whose rights are affirmed under federal and state law. To honor Indigenous Peoples' Day and in solidarity with the observance of Dia de la Raza across Latin American and Hispanic communities, we recognize that Indigenous peoples throughout this hemisphere have resisted colonization and continue to assert their inherent rights to land, language, and self-determination. Migwich, gracias, pidamaye, thank you. With that, I would now like to bring forward one of our very own students who is going to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day with us today, and I hope I don't say his Indian name wrong. Hi... Darn it, I already did it. Hi, huh? Why don't you come up and do us the honor of hearing it in the beautiful language of your people?
I think this will work. Okay, cool. I'll just hold it. Ahoh. Hello, my relatives. My name is Hezazaj Adams, and I'm gonna be performing a grass dance today because it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I was asked by people on the school board and in the district to come here and share a dance with you guys. And yeah, we've been doing grass dance for multiple centuries. It's a very traditional style of dance, and yeah, it originated with the Dakota and the Lakota when, you know, they had to lay down on the grass in their nomadic way. They would send out the grass dancers to, you know, pat down the grass and, you know, bless the land, rid of any, you know, evil spirits. And yeah, that's basically what we try to do as grass dancers, so you'll see me try to move in a way that looks like a waving field of grass when the wind hits it, and that's how we kind of have the grass dance name. Whenever he does show up, I think he'll be here, we wanna honor Vince Patton. He is a cultural equity staff here who ran the Indigenous Students Organization with me and is a great mentor and teacher that I've learned a lot from, and I'm very grateful to, you know, be around him. But unfortunately, he'll be leaving the district Friday, will technically be his last day. But yeah, and I don't really have much else to say. But yeah, Vince walks in here, my mom over here, we'll probably give him this blanket that we were gonna offer him whenever he probably shows up. But yeah, that's all I pretty much have to say, so we can get into it now.
Thank you very much for coming in and dancing for us. We really appreciate it.
Oh yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if we could just please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us today an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Thompson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Hey, yes. Could I be recognized? I'd like to amend, I'd like to make a couple of, I'd like to suggest that we make a motion to suspend the lottery for the public forum and to extend the public forum by 30 minutes so that we can accommodate everyone. So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
We need, first, we have, we have a motion, and we had a second, so we can discuss it there. You wanna amend that motion to approve?
Yes.
We have a motion in front of us right now.
Well, you went, you know, you made the motion pretty fast, so I wasn't really able to-
Okay.
-make my motion, so-
But I'm saying, as we have a motion in front of us, it's been seconded. Now, for discussion, you want to amend, making an, add an amendment to it?
Yes, okay.
So what is your amendment you'd like to add?
I would like to suspend the lottery for the public forum and extend the public forum by 30 minutes to accommodate more speakers because we have a packed house.
So the amendment is to suspend the lottery and to extend the forum by 30 minutes for a full 60 minutes, is what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second?
I just have a question.
No, there's no question. We don't have an amendment on the floor.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, we do not have a second. It does not go through. So, it, the motion failed because there wasn't a second. So it's standing before us. I have a motion. I have a second. Who seconded this?
Uh, it was me.
Okay, you have a second?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion?
Chair?
Yes.
Could I make another motion to add something to the agenda within the, within the Robert rules?
Yes, you can, we're still in discussion. Could you like to make an amendment to the agenda?
Sure. I would like to amend the agenda to discuss what actions the school district has done to mitigate the risk to our students at the high school due to this enrollment process. And if it's not, I mean, I'm not asking for any confidential information, just kind of what actions have we taken over the last 14 days. So that's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to discuss what, you wanna say it again?
Mitigation efforts around student safety at the high school with respect to the enrollment process.
Okay, so we have an amendment motion, or a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Hearing none, that fails. So any further discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing no discussion, this will be a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion passes six to one. We also have before us a consent agenda. This contains a variety of business items that come to us monthly, including donations, and we are truly grateful for the support that we see every month from our community and the donations provided to our students and staff. I wanna make sure I thank everyone that has donated or given time to our school district. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right.
Daniels?
Yep. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Arcan.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Scar.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that we have the consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. Public forum is open up to 30 minutes, and we right now have 12 requests to speak. Per School Board Policy 206 Addendum A, in the event that more than 10 individuals submit written requests to speak during a public comment session, the school board will give priority to individuals who wish to address specific items that are on the agenda for the meeting. After this priority has been applied, the remaining opening speakers, up to a total of 10, will be determined by a lottery. Any person who does not get a chance to speak, we always encourage you to submit written comments to the school board, and those that do get to speak, if you also have written comments after you're done speaking, you can also submit those. Public forum will be three minutes per speaker. When you have one minute remaining, you will see the orange sign. The orange card will be held up. At the end of three minutes, at the end of 30 seconds, you'll see the yellow sign, and then at the end of three minutes, the gavel will tap. The speaker will be called, the microphone will recognize, then it will be ended. Speakers will be called up to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personal and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. We will now draw the names of the first speaker. All right, the next thing we have on our agenda tonight is informational item one, C1, student recognition. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you, Chair Arcan, members of the board. Tonight, we proudly celebrate the achievements of current students and members of the class of 25 who represented the district as AP Scholars and National Merit Semifinalists. Congratulations to each of you for state and national level recognition. We also extend our sincere gratitude to the dedicated staff and supportive family members who played a vital role in these successes. In recognition of their accomplishments, students have received a certificate, bear pin, and letter acknowledging their achievements. Now, please join us in watching a video highlighting their accomplishments.
That was totally amazing. All right, we're gonna go on to information item C2, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Chair Arcan, and members of the board. I wanna begin my report tonight with a special shout-out to our two student representatives. You may have seen them up there in the video, but Senior Tom Reese and Junior Lily Johnson, these are back there, yep, have gotten special attention recently. Tom was named as one of the supreme monarchs of the realm during homecoming festivities, and both of our student reps were included in tonight's recognition video with AP Scholar Honors, so congratulations to you both, and well done. Last week, extended-day students from Adnys Heights Elementary joined leaders from the city of Adnys Heights to attend a ribbon-cutting event for the Kohler Road Trail that runs adjacent to the school. The project was made possible through safe routes to school funding. Performances of the, of the high school foul musical Rogers and Hammerstein Cinderella will take place November 14th and 15th, and the 20th through the 22nd at the new Performing Arts Center. The venue will give our talented student, cast, crew, and technical staff the opportunity to showcase some truly magical special effects. Find ticket information on the district's website. This will be the first, first musical in the venue, so get your tickets. After a successful inaugural event last year, the high school team is planning the 2025 Test Drive Next Stop Reality event for this year's junior class. Students will go through different stations and make important decisions in categories such as housing, utilities, transportation, childcare, insurance, and food. The team is looking for approximately 200 volunteers to make the December 17th event a success. Those looking to volunteer are asked to contact Katie Olson, our career pathways coordinator at the high school. And finally, as I close my superintendent's report, I want to acknowledge the complexities our district has been working through the past couple of weeks regarding the situation in which an individual fraudulently, fraudulently enrolled in our district. While the investigation continues, I do not have any new information to share, however, I want to again express appreciation to our students, families, and staff members who came forward with information that led to our initial investigation and swift action to revoke the individual's enrollment. I also want our families and community members to know that we have carefully reviewed our enrollment procedures and are confident our processes are as strong as they can be under state and federal law. Student safety and maintaining, maintaining a secure learning environment will always remain our top priority. We understand that situations like this can be frustrating, especially when details cannot be shared as quickly or as fully as people might wish, and please know that we are committed to being as transparent as possible within the limits of data privacy laws and the ongoing investigation. So that's my report. Chair Arcan.
Thank you. Dr. Kazmicek. All right, that, we're gonna go down to discussion item D1. This is the first reading of School Board Policies 301, 302, 303, 422, and 523. The policies listed above, in the, in the agenda, will be on the board agenda on November 10th, and, or as, another agenda for the second reading. If there's any discussion or questions on one of these policies, please give us the policy number and the page number following along. So what we do is we bring policies for a first reading. We can look through them. If we have any questions as a board, and then we bring it back to approve those policies. Do I hear any, do I have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Scar.
Thank you. I would just like to read the general, on 302, the General Statement of Policy Regarding the Superintendent, which says, acts as the chief executive officer of the school district. And then if you look at-
Can you tell us what page you are on the agenda?
Oh, sure, it's 55. You know, Scott, my eyes aren't as good as they used to.
Okay.
So, and, you know, I've already complained about the lighting once. So, the next one is, the superintendent is responsible for the management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies, and is directly accountable to the school board. And then it says on C, the superintendent may delegate responsibilities to other school district personnel but shall continue to be accountable for actions taken under such delegation. I'm just wondering, have there been any recent law changes or any changes that would impact that? You picked, we picked all those up in that policy, 302. Well, I don't, I don't get to go to the policy meetings because they're not subject to open meeting laws, so I'm just asking the question.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I understand the question.
The, I think the question is, is, were there, I see there's all, there's small changes, but there hasn't been a change in this policy for how long? That's my question. Has this, has this policy been in place for 10 years? Have there any, been any changes resulting from that?
Yeah, I'm not sure how long the policy's been in place. We'd need to look into that, but-
Well, I don't mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I was just asking a question.
Sure.
So you don't recall any?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
At the top of the policy, it says adopted December 11th, 1995, and then it has the revision dates right underneath it.
Yeah, I couldn't see that on my computer, so-
It's right at the top. Yeah, it's at the-
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Yep, it's at the top.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry for the question.
So, it's, yeah, they're, these policies are updated, some of them yearly and some of them on a two- or three-year cycle.
Right.
So.
However, the way that we develop policies and procedures, that group is not subject to open meeting laws, so we don't get the benefit of the discussion around policy. I brought this up before, so I just wanna point that out.
And I believe that we do, that's why we bring them here, and then we have people on the policy committee that can answer questions.
Do we know if we, do you know if we do a risk assessment on policies?
I do not know.
Neither do I, because I don't get to go to the meetings. I'll stop.
If, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a question, but if a person wants to be on the policy committee when we revise our assignments, you know, that's something that you could bring forward as an assignment that you get to do and relinquish another assignment that you already have.
Thank you. When I was, when I was seated, I was not given the privilege of requesting any committees. I don't know if that's typical, but I think given my finance background, operational background, I would think that I would be helpful to the district, but I was not given that privilege.
Right. That's because you were a new board member.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is-
Okay, thank you.
We're moving to reorganization in January, and that'd be, that's something you can request.
Okay, so I didn't know that a new, a new board member doesn't get that privilege. That's all, that's all, I didn't know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the policies? Okay, making sure. These will come back at the November 10th meeting. We're gonna go on to operational item E1, payment and invoices. So we met as a finance committee, and we looked at how we can present the invoice report in a way that it gives a clear, somebody's on the lights.
Somebody lean against the lights?
They're automatic, aren't they? Well, is this better lighting, Mr. Scar?
Thank you. So one of the things we looked at, one of the things we did look at when we're trying to do this, this invoice report, is we needed to make it informational but at the same time manageable. You know, we could have loaded it up and had 150 pages of information, so one of the, the committee looked, and we're bringing forward, if you see in the board packet, we're adding an object code, so you could see what it was for. So we're adding the object code to the report so that you can kinda see what it was spent on. Deb, do you have any other thing you'd like to add? I know you're on the committee.
Well, just that when the finance committee met to go over the, the extended document, there were items on there that had some personal information on there, like student scholarship amounts and things like that, that are personal information that they don't need to be called out by name, so that's one of the reasons why we decided on this format.
Right. May I, can I get a nomination to approve the new invoice report?
So moved.
And Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I brought up this matter, matter a few times, and I think it's, I think it's still very, you know, it's still very difficult to read it, just because there's so many items. And I'm thinking, well, can we get it stratified by dollars? So anything over $5,000 we can look at, or something like that, so it's not just like a register that you put together. I made that, and, you know, you got, you made those, some of those changes, but still, I mean, I offered my assistance to help on this, and, you know, I'm a licensed EPA as well. I would be happy to take a look at it. I've summarized information before, but nobody took me up on the offer, so I was disappointed with that.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Thompson.
Yes, Ms. Thompson, sorry, you're close.
I would just like to make a point that it is not our job to work for the school district in that capacity. We are a governing body. We don't get into the day-to-day business of the school district. That is not our role here. So we would not, no matter what our professional training is, we all have professional training up here that the district could utilize if we were employees of the district in that sense. We are not employees of the district in that sense, so we do not get involved in these decisions. And, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we keep going over this finance report. This is what we're given. We're given all the money that comes in and goes out of the school district. It's right there. It's in every school board packet for every community member to see if they wanna see it. They can see a copy of the packet. They can call the district. They can ask any questions they want regarding any number of things to do with this or any other issues. So I'm not sure, I, I appreciate what was done here to provide a little more clarity, so thank you very much for, for adding these pieces, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Scar.
I would just say that, you know, one of our obligations is to present information that is useful for the public, that they can read and understand. This report doesn't, and as I've said before, and I know we keep going over it, and it's like I'm beating a dead horse, this'll be the last time-
The last note that I'll make is, by accepting these rates, we're able to continue to hold and build on our reserve balance, which is right at the goal that we have, that we have established as a committee.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Stripe Oji.
So I have a question, we're hearing a lot about increases in health insurance rates, premiums, as we look at the government shutdown, and if we go back, how will that impact what's being approved here?
That will not have a significant impact on what's being approved here. We do have a number of employees that will experience, that may experience a significant impact, but in terms of our self-insured plans, that, those changes in legislation will not necessarily have a significant impact on us as an individual school district.
Thank you.
Board Member Ellison.
Just a, a point of clarity for when we make the motion, there's three separate recommended actions here. Do we need to handle, one is for health, one's for dental, and one's for I. Do we need to handle all of those individually, or can we approve them all in one, one motion?
Because it's all listed there, it can be approved all in one motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Scar.
Having just received my insurance rate increase, this is really good.
Yes.
It really is. So, thank you.
For sure. Yep, we're excited about it.
All right, so the motion in front of, the action in front of us is to accept the insurance increases in the rates. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, by Deb, Ms. Beloit, and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Daniels, aye.
Scar.
Aye.
Stripe Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go on to agenda item E3, Action on the Bid for the Birch Lake Boiler Replacement Project. Mr. Wald.
Thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. We're bringing for you tonight the proposal for the board, for the replacement of the boiler at Birch Lake Elementary School. This project was included in the long-term facilities maintenance, maintenance plan. The boiler is original to the building, going back to nineteen sixty-six, so when we replace it next summer, it will have served the district for sixty years, a good time to replace it. This project was designed by Hallberg Engineering, and they facilitated the bid opening last Thursday, October ninth. Five companies submitted bids, the lowest qualifying bid was by CM Construction for two million six hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars, beating out the next lowest bid by twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars, less than one percent. Our recommendation is for the board to accept the overall bid for the Birch Lake Elementary Boiler Replacement Project as presented to CM Construction in the amount of two million six hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
All right, you've heard the, the action, the recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve the bid for the Birch Lake Elementary Boiler Replacement Project for two million six hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred?
So moved.
So moved by Daniels, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Scar. Any further discussion?
Chair? I was at Birch Lake Elementary, I think it, three or four weeks ago, and met, I don't know if Julian's here or not, but the prin, the principal there. And then I met with the custodian, because in the old days, I was a custodian here, and so I'm biased on this, I just want to tell you, after meeting with the custodian, I'm glad that you're replacing it, it needs to be replaced, so, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? This will also be a roll call vote, there's no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison, aye. Scar.
Aye.
Stripe Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Okay, that carries, new boilers coming. Did you want to go visit the old one before they replaced it?
Yes. As long as the same custodian guy, I can't remember his name, but he's a good guy.
All right. We're now, it's now time for Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to update the school board and the public on the committee work in which they have engaged in their official capacity as board members, and create awareness of upcoming district and partnership events. Are there any board members would like to share, and the example would be, we could talk about the Cinderella, Cinder musical that's coming along, where the tickets, so like say, you know, that would be a way of, something you could share as a board member. Yes, Ms. Daniels?
I'd like to say Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to everyone, and I also wanted to say, I attended the Central Open House, and everything at Central looks fabulous, and so great for the students to have more space, and for the staff to have more space, it looks beautiful. The Senior Center Open House was, a couple of weeks ago, I attended that, that was terrific right here in this building, lots of exciting things for people to sign up for, great cookies and coffee, that was fun, and also participated in the homecoming parade on a beautiful Friday afternoon in downtown White Bear, and that was so much fun to see students and neighbors and, and staff, and just families having a great time at the parade, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Ellison.
I just want to echo Ms. Daniels' gratitude for homecoming, that's a lot of work to put all of that together, so staff, students, everybody, it was, it was so much fun, it was beautiful weather, the stadium was packed, it was just a really wonderful sense of community. Couple of things that are coming up, on Saturday of this weekend, there's the annual Mile Under the Lights Race at the stadium for middle school and high school runners, they, it's exactly what it sounds like, they run a mile under the lights, and it's really fun to go to, so anybody is welcome. And then also, it's concert season, so there's a band concert coming up, I know for sure, on the twenty-third at the beautiful New Performing Arts Center, please go hear our music students do their thing, because it's, it's really wonderful to hear our students and how, how well they do, so, that's what I got.
Anybody else?
Yes, Stripe, Ms. Stripe Oji.
I had brought up about the Penguin Project being, taking place here in White Bear Lake. It was held at the Center for Performing Arts at the high school, and it is a performance where all of the students are special needs, and then all of the students have mentors that are with them, typical students that work alongside them, and form very beautiful friendships. It was a beautiful, it was Annie, for anyone that got to go see it, I know a lot of people in the community, I went to three, I think, out of the four performances, and it was just beautiful and lovely, and I know they will be coming back again next year. It's a partnership between the White Bear Lake Center for the Arts, the school district providing the space, and all of the volunteers that were, came from within and around the community, so I want to thank White Bear for hosting that performance.
Thank you. Mr. Scar.
One thing that I had to follow, I mentioned Birch Lake, and I went there after the last meeting to see their special education and what they do there, that the people there are just, you know, absolutely stellar, and what we've done in that facility is just, it's really nice. I mean, you can actually see how much they care. The other thing that I wanted to address, and I'll give the chair their deference on this, is to address the tension, and I think constructive tension, that I've created, I may have created.
Is this about a, something about, in your duties of about a meeting? I'm wondering if we're wandering out of the forum?
We may be, and that's why I'm deferring to you. If you want me to address that.
Yeah, it's just, it's not something, like coming up, I asked that we don't address that.
Okay.
But I will say, adding up, you said, "I love the playground at Birch Lake."
Yes.
Very good playground, so, and the kids were so excited when I was there, so yeah, that was, that's great also, and the one at Otter Two is awesome, and so I look forward to mine. Now, Ms. Thompson.
Just a reminder for, I mean, I guess I'm not sure on the elementary level, and I probably should know, but I have a high schooler, and conferences are tomorrow, so if you have a child that is needing to, you know, go and find out how they're doing in their classroom, you know, make sure you set up time to talk to their teachers, and I know that if they're not available tomorrow, you can always find another day and another time to connect with your child's educators and see how your students are doing, so that we can all work together to educate our students the best of our ability.
Thank you. Ms. Beloit.
So, I just wanted to point out and congratulate Andy and everybody else, and the finance touches all of these things every single day, and goes nuts with them. We were awarded the Quarter Century Finance Awards in White Bear Lake area schools. These awards are the highest form of recognition a governmental agency can receive in the area of accounting and financial reporting, representing a significant accomplishment for the district's finance department and staff, so I just wanted to say congratulations.
All right, we're wrapping up, but before we do, I just wanted to the audience, say, I want to thank you for coming, you are always welcome, and we'd love to see you here. This is our community, I grew up here, so I like to see people here, you're always welcome, thank you for coming and participating in, in this business meeting. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Ellison, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.[1601.12]